If I can stick a second one.
When I speak, I'm going to...
Yeah, I'm gonna see if I can slide this down a little bit. It is seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order and welcome everybody tonight. Roll call, please.
Charles?
Here.
Clutt?
Present.
Larson?
Here.
Miller?
Present.
Sanchez?
Here.
Wong?
Here.
Jacobs?
Here.
And everybody? I kinda lost track. Need approval of the agenda, please?
I'll move to approve the agenda with removal of number 7A.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to offer an amendment. I'd like to, for the agenda, in addition to one use correction, I'd like to remove item 6H just for an update.
You want it off the consent agenda?
Yeah, right.
6H? Oh, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? We are lucky tonight. We have Anna E. Arroyo, did I say that right? Who's gonna lead the Pledge of Allegiance, and I understand she has a wonderful singing voice, is going to sing the National Anthem as well, so, thank you very much. And tell us, come up here first, please, into this microphone. Tell us who you are.
My name is Anna E. Arroyo. I am from Aldridge, and I am a seventh grader.
Anything else you want to say? Like you're the greatest, or anything like that?
Sure, I'm the greatest.
I just wanted to have you tell me that, so...
I want to see Frozen next weekend. I am, you play Elsa.
Come see Frozen next weekend. It's March 5th, 6th, and 7th at 7:00 PM, we are putting on a show of Frozen, and I'm Elsa.
And where's that?
Aldridge Intermediate.
So you want to start us out with a Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our home. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes ever rise, stars through the perilous fight? Oh, the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gate-proofed through the night, that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I feel sorry for the kids next month, they gotta do the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we don't have any announcements tonight, some understanding, correct? So we are now at the recognition and award to the school district of Beloit. Monica, are you leading that charge?
I'm leading that charge.
So, good evening. We have lots of wonderful students and community partners and staff to recognize tonight, and I always appreciate starting off the board meeting with such positive news and recognition, and tonight is no exception. However, to start us off, the school district of Beloit is actually going to be recognized with an award, so I invite Michelle Babellus to come up here for a minute. She's gonna join me at the podium, and Michelle is the Director of School Health, and I really enjoy collaborating with her. She has a wonderful health newsletter that we post to our website, lots of great information. Michelle is going to be introducing Tracy Haugen. If you can join us at the podium, Tracy has an award, and Michelle's gonna talk a little bit about what we're being recognized for this evening.
I'm so excited to be recognized with this designation. We're actually one of the schools in Rock County to be getting this certificate for HeartSafe Schools, and I'm gonna let Tracy give a little speech about what it is.
Sure. Hi, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Tracy Haugen, and I am from Children's, Wisconsin, formerly known as Children's Hospital of Wisconsin. I work within the Herma Heart Institute at the hospital, and I work with a nonprofit organization called Project Adam. And if you're not familiar with Project Adam, we do a lot of work in the schools to make sure that schools are prepared for cardiac emergency. We are a 20-year-old program. Our program started in 1999 after the death of a young athlete who was playing basketball in the Milwaukee area, and he was a multi-sport athlete, had no known medical problems or heart conditions, and the day that he was collapsed, they were unable to revive Adam, and unfortunately, that day, he passed away. Back in 1999, his parents, Patty and Joe Lemel, who are also very, very much involved in the program, yet to this day, they came together with the hospital to say, what can we do to not let this happen to another family or another student? And so, Project Adam was born out of that collaboration between Adam's family and the hospital. So, back in 1999, there really were no AEDs or defibrillators in school buildings or public places, for the most part. And so, the first part of Project Adam was really the awareness and getting AEDs in buildings. And then what we learned over time is that there's more to it than just an AED. There is a program that needs to be put around that, that allows people to know where it is, how to use it, be trained, practice it, have a response team that's trained and prepared to respond to an emergency. So back in 2016, we came up with the HeartSafe School Designation Program, so, working with schools across the state, helping them through the process. And I met Michelle last year, a little unusual in that when I met Michelle, she was already there. Usually, I work with schools, and it takes maybe six months to a year to really help them get the program up and running, and Michelle was there already. So, I didn't really have to do a whole lot, but we do like to celebrate with districts because we know that it's a lot of work. It isn't just, oh, let's put a machine up in the, in the school building, they need to know how to use it and maintain it, and so forth. So, I just congratulate everybody, Michelle and her teams, leadership, administration, for supporting this work and making sure that your community is prepared for a cardiac emergency. So, what we do is we, it's a three-year designation, we like to celebrate with just, you know, face-to-face kind of type of congratulations, and then we also present you with a school banner per school that is a HeartSafe school. And so, I have all the banners here tonight, we're gonna present you with the high school one today, and...
So it's not easy, and we are the only school district in Rock County.
That is, so that's a good thing, not only for our students, but our staff. So, thank you, we gladly accept. Absolutely, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness. Yes, thank you. And I want to thank the nurses as well, that are in these buildings, that are three years, make sure we've got a scheme set up, and that they are fully trained and ready to go in case of an emergency.
So about a month ago, I received a phone call from a very kind and thoughtful woman who asked if her organization could do a school drive supply, school supply drive for one of our schools. Best phone call ever. I can assure you, you are going to be happy to meet Betty Golden from H&R Block. She selected Merrill Elementary School, and you know, what was nice about this is at the beginning of the year, you have lots of school supplies. By halfway point in January, those supplies are running down, and you are very good about having Kleenex in that, too. So if you could join me at the podium, can we please thank her and Cheryl Sterner, who could not be here tonight, for delivering much-needed bags of school supplies? And I'll let you say just a few words.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure. I have to tell you that two years ago, H&R Block decided that we needed to become more involved in the community and areas that are needed. And so, they established the school supply drive last December, and I'm thinking, December, we're not even open, why are we doing this? But anyway, we did it, and we, they brought in boxes to each one of the offices, and we began to fill those boxes. And so, it was, you know, what am I, where am I gonna go with this? There's so many schools, how do we know where to drop these off? And so, I called the school district of Beloit, and they said, well, you really should speak with Monica. And I said, okay, and this lovely lady comes on, and she's all bubbly, and I told her who I was and what our purpose was, and she gasped. She gasped, and she was so grateful that we were going to do this. And she was so appreciative, and let me say that I am appreciative, because I have seen how much it was loved and enjoyed and appreciated. And this year, we're gonna be bigger and better at it, because what I learned here made me realize there's a whole more that's needed. And so, we partner with different businesses, and by doing so, we're gonna go to them and say, hey, how about chipping in and helping us do school supplies for kids? And so, it was a pleasure, and this lady is just remarkable, and also, Brandy at Merrill School. We were welcomed so warmly, we felt so comfortable, we couldn't leave, we just had to keep staying there, but, but I thank you. I thank you very much, and I thank the school district of Beloit.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
For you and Cheryl.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm gonna head out then.
Okay, you can. I'd like Ms. Emily Pels to join me at the podium. We have a couple of recognitions from the high school. We're gonna honor some students and staff tonight. The first person we are gonna recognize is Dr. Evelyn Galindo, are you here? She didn't come? Wow, this will be very quick. Dr. Galindo was honored by the YWCA as a 2020 Woman of Distinction, and it really is for her work in advocating for students. She is a native of El Salvador, arrived in the US with her family in the 1980s as refugees, and during this, during the Civil War that was taking place, she really finds ways to get involved with students, our school district, and everything. So, in her absence, we congratulate her, and what a great way to represent our school district at the Leader Luncheon, which will be coming up in April. I'll give you her certificate. Wonderful. Now, we're going to ask some students to join us at the podium. I would like Ms. Sam Hoppy to the podium, and her awesome academic decathlon team members. Do we have any members here?
Two.
Well, come on up. Oh, we have three, two.
Two.
She is their coach at Beloit Memorial High School. They did amazing job representing us at the regional decathlon. I'm gonna say their names really quickly, even though they're not here. Gabby Trevor received third place in speech and essay. Noah Levy, third place in interview. Arianna Quinn, second place in interview. But rounding out that awesome team was Hannah Wolf. Katie Kramer, Brianna Reynolds, Salma Corona, Eric Lopez, and Martha Garduno. And if you could just say a few words about the decathlon, that would be really helpful.
So for those of you who don't know, academic decathlon is a rigorous academic competition where these amazing students compete in 10 different categories, all around a central theme. This year's theme was health and wellness, so they studied the art, music, literature, economics, science, math, social studies. They wrote an essay, they did an interview, and wrote a speech. And they go and they compete against all different schools in the state of Wisconsin. They, this year, put in over 60 hours outside of the regular school day of practicing. They, and this is only our second year with the team back at Beloit Memorial. It was here about 10 years ago, and then it sort of dissolved, and in these two years, we've been able to go to the regional competition both years. We've grown our team, we doubled our team from a team of about 15 last year to about 30 this year, and we were able to take away in these two years, five individual ribbons. And these guys, as well as the whole rest of the team, are so amazing, they're so excited, they want to go to the state competition so badly next year, that they're going to be putting in an additional 30 hours this year to prepare for our next season. So, they put in a lot of work, they, they make my job extremely easy. I am completely honored and privileged to be the coach of not only amazing students, but an amazing community and an amazing team, and we're extremely humbled by the fact that we have been able to do so well and be recognized, so, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations, guys, great job. Now, we often have many students recognized as Rotary Students of the Week. They're honor roll students, athletes, volunteers, mentors, leaders, ambitious, goal-driven, kind, and caring, which really makes a difference. There's this great quote that says, grasp the opportunity to make each day exceptional. These students do that every day. I would like, is Shelvin Garrett here, the second? Oh, they didn't make it either. I'm gonna say their names. Devon Staven, Gabriella Barraras, and Isabella Moore. So, Ms. Pels, will you be gracious enough to bring them back their certificates? So we'll give them a round of applause in absence, how about that? Now, I'm going to ask Ms. Malott, I think we're done, yep, and Mr. Benji Clutt to come to the podium. The last time, Mr. Clutt announced it before I had an opportunity to announce it, so Mr. Clutt, I might give you a little rough time. But, Benji Clutt, Mr. Benji Clutt was named Rotary Teacher of the Month, which is a really big honor, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Malott to say a few words, and, Benji, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm gonna have you just come to the podium and just say...
Good evening. I'm the principal at Converse Elementary currently. Benji Clutt was nominated, last year actually, by Ms. Vicky Hamilton, who was his principal then. She absolutely chose the right person to receive this Rotary recognition. Benji Clutt currently, or was, previously, I should say, a first-grade teacher in our building. He came to us several years back, and I actually worked with him as a teacher. He was a wonderful teammate, fabulous colleague, always positive, kind, just embraced the challenges that we face every day. This year, he was interested in becoming a STEM coach, so we recently, two weeks ago, transitioned Benji into his new role as a STEM coach at Converse Elementary. In that time, he has already taken on all of the challenges with his new position, he's learned it very well, and he has really taken to his new role. Throughout his years at Converse, he has been on almost every committee that I could think of, right, Benj?
Yep.
Yep, and he, like I said, is just an absolute positive leader to all of our students. He's a positive role model to our staff, he gets staff involved in everything that, that we can have to offer to our students and staff. He's an active participant and leader in our after-school program. Currently, he's serving as DI Coordinator for our building. He does after-school sports for our kids, after-school program. I've conned him into being our before-school person as well. So just about anything that we ask for Benji to do, he does it, and embraces a challenge, and does it with a smile, and we are so very thrilled to have him as part of our staff. So, thank you, Benji, for all that you do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Now, Benji, is it true that you owe your success to your oldest brother, Jeff?
A little bit.
And then, just so you know, Mom called me tonight to let you know that we're still looking for your mom. You might not know this, but about 45 years ago, Benji was put on our doorstep with a note that said, Mrs. Clutt, since you have so many kids, what's one more? So, we promised Benji we'll look for his mom until the day we die.
Excuse me, Mr. Clutt, I think Benji owes it all to the first principal that hired him.
Anyway, in case anybody's thinking I was serious, he, he really is my brother, and we have the same mom, but we always have this running joke, and I have the microphone and he doesn't, so...
By the way, really young, I'm used to him talking and me listening, so...
Well, you've learned well.
I'm kidding, but I shouldn't say my first-grade teachers here, Miss Washington.
Congratulations, brother. Okay, we are now at the place of public comment, I believe we have public comment tonight, so I need to read this statement. "The Board of Education is now at the place on the agenda where we will receive public comments on areas of interest that are not on the agenda. The Board of Education will generally not respond or act on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Appropriate items will be referred to administration or one of the Board's committees. While the Board and District welcome public comments, we as a Board also must ask that you exercise care in your comments that relate specifically to District employees, or students, or others connected with the school system. In order to protect the rights of these individuals, the Board will and comment on such topics. The use of specific names of District personnel may lead to legal liability on the part of the speaker. The Board has existing procedures in place to address legitimate complaints against staff members and persons related to the system. The Board of Education asks that each person wishing to address the Board has completed a citizen comment card and given it to the Board Secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Individuals will come to the podium as they are called, give their name and address before speaking on their topic. Each person will be given up to three minutes to speak. Public comments requiring translation will be given six minutes to speak." I believe there are persons to speak, so you wanna round them out?
Yes.
Thank you.
First, I have Eunice Dean Glass.
Good evening. My name is Eunice Dean Glass. Do you want my address also? 2035 Mount Avenue, Beloit, Wisconsin, and I don't... Eunice Dean Glass, 2035 Mount Avenue, Beloit, Wisconsin. I won't need three minutes. I simply have a question, and I don't need a political answer, and I'm sure I won't get an answer at all tonight. And I know the District has gone through a lot of term law, but my question is, and I want a straightforward answer, why was it necessary to get rid of all administrators and most teachers of color? Do you need me to repeat it? Evidently not. You got the question right.
And we do not respond to questions as was...
Right, that's why I asked that you need me to repeat it.
Okay, next up, I have Lisa Anderson Levy, and I have several people who are willing to yield their time to her if needed.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Anderson Levy. I live at 723 Church Street in Beloit, and I'm here this evening to make three points. Point number one, I recognize that as a Board, you make challenging decisions. Politicians and policymakers often mistakenly believe that fairness, neutrality, or even objectivity ought to guide your decision-making. The problem with this is that the context that you experience as neutral or fair is actually a world organized to benefit white, middle, and upper-class folk. So when decisions are made from that point of view, they're often harmful for those who are most vulnerable, and here, I'm talking about poor people and people of color. When policies are enacted that yield poor results, rather than blame or question the context of the decision-making, the most vulnerable are often blamed. This is because the very concept of fairness depends on the idea that everyone be treated the same. I'm suggesting this evening that you need to, that you need a decision-making process that prioritizes equity rather than fairness, that you need processes that target support where it is most needed. Equity prompts us to focus on making changes that improve outcomes for all of our students. For example, rather than concluding that there are bad or good parents or children based on criteria that are neither in practice, objective, or neutral, an equity-based stance would ask, what kinds of supports do parents and children need to be successful? Our society does not provide adequate support for parents or children, yet because some of us are able to navigate successfully through this structure due to our own access to resources, we mistakenly believe that we are the good, and the folks who are less successful are bad. Children are not good or bad, they just are, and your job, your role as the Board of Education is to make decisions that benefit the most vulnerable. It is not to appease the parents, it is not to appease privileged parents. Enacting equity-based decision-making and organizational change requires strong collaborative leadership and a willingness to experience and work through productive discomfort. A common misconception is that if, for example, the Board of Education develops a policy focused on supporting students who are struggling academically, that it, that will be at the expense of the children who are doing well academically. This is absolutely not the case, no research supports that connection. Research does show that when you fulfill the needs of the most vulnerable students, all children will do well. Point number two, until, as a community, we recognize and embrace who we are, we will never be able to effect sustained change. As the Board of Education, part of your role is to value all of who we are as a community, especially since the Board is not that representative of the city. Embracing who we are means... Embracing who we are means that you let go of the nostalgia of how schools or classrooms were run 10, 20, or 30 years ago. It means that you let go of the nostalgia of how things were when you were kids and what it mean... and it also means that you see and meet your neighbors where they are today and stop wishing that they were different. Did I run out of time yet? No? Okay.
Lisa, just hold it. What she got for time, she had time ceded to her, so just fairness to Lisa, how much time you have?
She has four people that are willing to cede their time.
Don't worry, I won't use all that.
Well, you have the time, Lisa, so...
Okay. The inability of some to accept who we are as a community means that we think of ourselves as so peculiar and so unusual that no one would want to move to this city, that no one would want to work here or live here unless they know us. Until we believe that we are worth the expenditure of time and resources, no one else will either. Until we embrace who we are, we will not be able to hire a superintendent who will stay. I hear all the time that we need someone who is local because no outsider would be able to understand us. No outsider would be able to love us or love this community. We need a different mindset. We need to embrace who we are now and not who we wish we were. Turns out, we are not that different from many communities in Wisconsin. We are just more diverse by race and class. Does this mean that our peculiarity comes from our diversity? Can our diversity only be appreciated by someone who is from here? I am not from Beloit, and the diversity of this city definitely played a positive role in my decision to move here. I wonder, though, if the real story is that only an insider will be able to maintain the status quo. That only an insider can maintain historical structures that keep community members in their lanes. Only an insider can keep things the way they have always been. I believe the insider argument is made because folks believe that it is more important to maintain the status quo than it is to fundamentally change our district to better serve our most vulnerable students. The myth of the local hero who will save us is actually a dog whistle for the status quo. Should local candidates apply to any future search process? Absolutely. Should you limit or search to local or even regional candidates only? Absolutely not. Point number three, last one. Hiring a superintendent is the Board's most important job. This community does not deserve to be short-changed by a process that is designed to maintain that status quo. Trying to hire a superintendent now, when the school year is almost over, is a mistake. This would unnecessarily rush a process that, when done properly, requires community collaboration and buy-in. There are local benchmarks, and I encourage you all to review the process the Madison School District just used as they hired their new superintendent. We need a process that is equity-based, open, and collaborative. While none of this can guarantee a strong candidate, a weak process will guarantee a weak candidate. The last search is evidence of that. A national search in which qualified local candidates can compete must be your goal. A school district is only as good as its weakest students and must be judged by its ability to serve its most vulnerable. Choosing to use equity-based approaches matters in the life of students and their families, and I implore you to pay attention to the biases that are built into ideas of fairness. Many in our community are depending on all of you to disrupt the status quo and begin to act in the interest of all of our children. Thank you.
Yes. Excuse me, I have Paul Dionne, and he has one person who will cede their time to him.
My name is Paul Dionne. I live at 635 Harrison Avenue here in Beloit. I understand that as members of the school board, you are often made to listen to criticism from citizens. Although that's often well-deserved, I intend to speak positively tonight. I am here to deliver a love letter to the school district of Beloit. My wife and I moved here 12 years ago, and to be perfectly honest, we had no interest in settling down in Beloit. You see, my wife is from the West Coast, and I'm from the East Coast. It was nothing personal against Beloit, actually. We didn't want to live anywhere in the Midwest. But then, after a year and two, and then three, we came to like this place. We realized that Beloit had everything we wanted and needed, and that it was an excellent place to raise our two boys, who we have entrusted to the school district of Beloit for their education. I stand before you as an outsider who has adopted Beloit as my home. I work in Madison. My wife works in Beloit. We could live anywhere in between if we wanted to. I am well-educated. I have the resources and wherewithal to send my kids to whatever school I'd like them to attend, private or public. When our oldest was ready for school, my wife and I did our research, and we chose the school district of Beloit. Before you feel too good about yourselves, our decision was not based on who sat on the school board at the time. We chose the school district of Beloit because it provided unique strengths and assets for our boys. Although they're important, I'm not referring to the AP courses, or the jazz band, or the dual-language program. Those aren't the biggest reasons for us, because, let's be honest, we could find that sort of thing elsewhere in other schools. What makes SDB unique is its diversity of students. Unlike most other schools across this country, the school district of Beloit has children representing every racial and ethnic group, and not just token numbers, real numbers, and students from every socioeconomic background. Guess what? SDB is stronger for this. I find it unfortunate that many see this as a drawback or a problem. It is, in fact, an asset. Where else will my children best learn to recognize the privileges that accompany race and class, and how people's backgrounds affect their worldview? Where else will my children learn to interact with and learn together across racial and class lines? Where else will my children learn how to understand and overcome the structural factors limiting the American dream for so many? At SDB, my children are learning reading and math, as they would elsewhere, but more importantly, they are learning the critical soft skills that will serve them well in the new economy of the 21st century. In case you haven't been paying attention, our nation is already a majority-minority among its youth. That means white people are no longer a majority group for our kids. Overall, the U.S. as a whole is projected to become majority-minority by 2042. Combine that demographic fact with worsening socioeconomic inequality, and I'm actually quite happy that my kids are getting their education from a school district that already reflects what our country is increasingly coming to resemble. Thanks to living in Beloit and their education at the school district, my kids see the world for what it is, including the many challenges they will work to ameliorate as adults. Thanks to the excellent teachers they have and their amazing classmates, my boys are learning empathy, compassion, and how to leverage the power of cooperation with diverse stakeholders. I love Beloit, and I love the school district of Beloit. Now, returning to my kids learning to leverage the power of cooperation with diverse stakeholders, I have a request. Please take your time in selecting our next superintendent. Do a national search, and don't rush the process. Include the community in the selection process. Actually, listen to stakeholders. I suspect the last time around, somebody caught on to the dictatorial tendencies of your candidate, and you probably failed to heed the warnings. Hire a better search firm. Be open to applicants from away, and sell our strengths to them. Sell our strengths to them. The district is special and would provide an excellent opportunity for any number of qualified individuals to move here and serve as superintendent. Thank you.
Michelle, are there others? Thank you for your comments. Okay, we are at Tracy Shirck with the Climate Survey, and for those of you, we are combining the two sessions into one. So, Tracy, it's your show.
All right, so first off, thank you so much for the opportunity to present the Climate Survey that Shirck Consulting did this winter. And with that, there's a couple things that I would like to share with the Climate Survey. Our Climate Survey was conducted in January, and so this survey was conducted during a time when there were several items going on in the district. Some of those items going on in the district at that point in time is the previous superintendent was still in place. There was also a lot of conversation around the reconfiguration and looking specifically at the staff evaluation. So, every time you do a Climate Survey, it is a snapshot in time. So, I just want to preface that with the results that we're going to see with this survey. So, what we will be doing this evening is going through the survey results, some insights from that, then some specific potential action items for the district. And so, as we go into this survey, one of the things that we did with the survey is we sat down with administration at the time and said, "Based on the exit interviews that we did, what were the key areas that we wanted to focus on?" So, there were some key definitions that we came up with. So, I do want to chat a little bit about those definitions and how those fit into some of the buckets of questions within the Climate Survey. And so...
Hey, Tracy. Just one second. So, are you okay if a board member wants to ask a question that they can ask as you go?
Oh, absolutely.
So, Board, you don't need my permission to... if you have a question, just go ahead and feel free to ask Tracy.
Thank you, Jeff. So, with that, the first definition that we have is engagement, and that is the level that an employee is fully absorbed by and enthusiastic about their work, taking on a positive action to further the school's reputation and success. What we know about engagement is that when teams and individuals are engaged, they're more productive, they're more profitable, and they're more innovative. You know, what a recent Gallup survey stated is that individuals that are engaged in their work are 21% more productive, and that's significant, right? So, and what we also know about engaged staff is that they're less likely to leave the district. They're less likely to have safety or different types of quality incidents. The next one, here's another kind of information on engagement. So, this is a study showing that individuals that leave, it's 12 times higher among disengaged employees than highly engaged employees. So, essentially, looking at those retention numbers that we've seen, when we have engaged staff, they're less likely to leave. The next definition that we have is culture. So, and how we define this is the way teachers and other staff members work together and the set of beliefs, values, and assumptions that they share. And when you have a positive workplace culture, it does increase the employee engagement, attendance, and productivity. And all of those items are very important to students' learning when you look at the consistency in that specific learning environment. It decreases employee healthcare costs, safety incidents, and turnover. The third item that we looked at as far as those buckets was the climate. What is the specific climate within the organization? And what we know is that when there's a positive school climate, it increases a student's academic achievement, and so that had been defined as the school's effect on students, including teaching practices, diversity, and the relationship among administrators, teachers, parents, and students. And then, the fourth one that we looked at was the faith in the process. So, do teachers or do your staff inside the district have faith in the administrative practices and the processes that are being implemented in the school? And so, that's the level of trust and understanding that staff have in District Administration Board to do what they say they will do while following and holding themselves and others accountable to publish policies, procedures, and the strategic plan. So, with that, let's take a look at some of the insights through the Climate Survey. So, the first thing I want to talk about is the response rate that we saw. So, we saw 58.2% of individuals respond to the survey. So, the survey was sent out to 941 staff within the district. Of that, 548 responded. I will name that we did have some duplication of results, and we were able to, you know, delete that duplication out of the system.
Tracy, is that an average number, a good number?
Well, the number we really want to see is 65% or above. So, we did not hit that 65% number. Yet, with the climate that we had seen and some of the distrust within the district, I felt that that was a good number as a starting point, knowing that we will be doing, you know, four of these over the next two years, you know, one a semester. So, I think that this survey sets a good benchmark for where we go in the future, knowing that this is a snapshot in time. When we look at the survey participation, we did break this out by each school so that you can see what those percentages were by school. And so, this is something that when we look at, you know, I do look at these and say, "Okay, what were the schools that have lower participation or higher participation, and what's driving that?" So, those are the numbers that are there. I do want to name one thing that came out in the data that was, I felt somewhat interesting, and that was Brother Dutton showed up. And we had teachers that... or individuals that specifically said that they worked at Brother Dutton. And so, that was something that we named as well. And how we are sharing the survey results is we'll never share survey results if we had less than five participants because we, you know, are... we want to ensure that we're protecting the anonymity of the individuals that took the survey. So, when we look through this, there are a couple kind of key things that came to the surface. And with that, we're looking at some key strengths and some key opportunities. So, what I have is these were really relating to some specific questions, but as we look at that, we're going to look at, what do these specific themes look like? So, one of them was school safety as a strength, and then immediate supervisor treats fairly, treats me fairly, and that was at the building level. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through the conversation. The... And so, as we look at opportunity areas, what we're looking at is staff support relating to mental health and student discipline. And this was a key theme throughout the survey, as well as a key theme that came out through the exit surveys. The next was transparent communication, district valuing staff, and knowing the goals of the district. And when we look at those three specific areas, there's a couple key things that come up with that, and they're all relating to transparency and communication. So, when we look at district valuing their staff, a lot of that had to do with feeling like they knew what was going on or the communication that they were receiving. And then, knowing the goals of the district has to do with communication as well. So, we'll circle back around to these in a minute after we go through some of those key results. So, the next point here is we're looking at the top strengths of the district. And so, what this was looking at is when we did the exit surveys, we looked at the exit survey to say, you know, what were those top strengths of the district? And I'm going to compare these for you in just a minute. And so, the first thing we see is dedicated and invested teachers. We're also seeing facilities and technology and students backed by community support and pride, and then resources to be successful. So, one of the things that you're going to see as we go through... So one of the things that you're going to see as we go throughout this data, and it was a key question for me, is we're seeing some strengths, but then we're also seeing some concerns of the same areas as we go through some of this data. So we'll dig a little bit deeper into that. This next slide I want to share is comparing the climate survey to the exit survey. And when we compare the climate survey to the exit survey, there's a couple kind of key items that came out here. And one of those is we're seeing with the climate survey, a much stronger kind of correlation to, hey, dedicated and invested teachers versus those that had left. We're also seeing with current staff that, you know, the student population and the diversity of students is a key reason, you know, why they stay in the district and a strength of the district. Do I have any questions before I move on? All right. One of the other things before I move on from this slide that I wanted to point out is that in the climate survey, specialized teaching based on student need did not show up as a key strength. Yet, in the Likert questions, I believe that students who disrupt the learning environment receive the appropriate interventions, did receive a score of about an average of 2.4 out of a 5 on a Likert scale. And so 19% of the open response questions, staff request to leaders to address mental health and special needs issues that result in behaviors. And so what we're seeing through this, I'm sorry, I jumped to the improvement, but what we're seeing through this is we're seeing definitely a concern for discipline. And we talked about student discipline and student behaviors in the exit surveys. And so again, we're hearing very strongly in the climate surveys, a concern for student discipline and behaviors that we're seeing in the classroom. And so, but we're also saying, hey, how do we have some interventions that help our students to be successful? And how do we have some interventions that really address this at a young age, you know, at the earlier years in school? So the next item, and I'm going to go back one slide. So these were the survey results as top concerns for the climate survey. Then I'll compare them in a minute. But the top concern that we see here is student discipline and safety. And so one of the things that I want to name with this is that when we compared this to some questions regarding safety, and you heard me state that a strength at the beginning of this conversation was that staff felt safe in their classrooms, that they felt safe in their school buildings. And so one of the things that we found is that when we combine student discipline and safety, they're two different things, right? We're getting kind of a different answer for that. So I just wanted to clarify that, is that distinction between, do I feel safe in my school? Do I feel safe in the hallways? For overall, for the most part, there's, you know, a couple of areas there that, yes, we do feel safe in our school, whereas discipline is something that's different. The next item as far as a concern was that lack of consistent administrative leadership and accountability. And a key item that came out of the open response results with that was the number of changes in the superintendent, which we're well aware of, correct? The other item with that was also looking at how often leaders are changed within the specific schools. So when we look at how often principals are moved from school to school versus able to stay in a school for a long period of time and build that trust, so that was definitely something that was brought forward as a concern. Lack of focus on the student needs, this theme came right back to, you know, if there's discipline issues, what are those? And what are those specific interventions that could be done for students early on before they result in behavioral issues? Clarity in district directives, and that's specifically looking at, you know, some of those policies, procedures, administrative items. So when we talked about faith and process as a bucket, that's really what that's tied to. School board effectiveness and alignment with district goals, educator effectiveness and accountability. And so I do want to compare these to the exit surveys that we did. And there were a couple of key points here of some distinctions between the exit surveys and the climate survey. And one of the things that we see is, you know, a concern with current staff as far as student discipline and safety, as you see that differentiation between that and the exit, and that is the fourth one down. The other one that we saw here, and, you know, kind of a key distinction between the climate and the exit, was staff workload and support. And so what we really saw with the staff workload and support was a concern about how much time does staff have to prep for specific classes? How much time does staff have to do all of the specific items that they need to do to be successful in the classroom, especially when there are potential sub shortages or potential extracurriculars that they're being pulled in to do? And so those were some of the things that we were able to hear through some of those open response items. Is there any questions on this? Okay. So I've talked about how the open response items are sharing with the, this was in the report, and then I did put it in the deck, knowing that we combined the two conversations, so I just want to name that. But with this open response, there was a couple of things I wanted to note with open response questions, is we asked two distinct questions. One was, what do you feel is important for the superintendent to know? And the second out of four was, what was important for the principal or department head to know? What we see at the top here is, you know, 41% of staff essentially stated, you know what, in our school building, we have great communication, teamwork, and accountability with building leadership. We had several staff that named their specific principal, stating thank you to them for what they're doing. So we're really seeing that. I want to contrast that, though, to leader needs to focus on the teamwork and culture in our schools to be positive. So we're seeing a portion of our schools where, you know what, we feel we have a great leader in place, and we're seeing another portion where, hey, we really aren't focused, you know, we're not a cohesive team. So those were some of the highlights that came out. The next one down, so the third one down, is listen to staff and be transparent with communication. We're seeing 76% of respondents to that question stated that they were very concerned about transparency of communication and directives coming from administrative, meaning the superintendent. Whereas, when we look in the building level, we're seeing 31% of individuals state that that's a concern. So what are some of those key communication items? Stephanie?
Is this, I can see that in my, is there one or something?
It was in your report, and so knowing that we combined the two, I pulled it out of the report to put here, but it was...
I didn't access something earlier, so perhaps it's...
Yeah, yep, so it was in that report, and I know it's out on board docs, too.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The, a couple others that I want to point out here, and I'm going to pull this into some of that other conversation, is addressing the mental health, special needs issues that results in behavior. And we've talked quite a bit about that coming up as a concern. We also chatted a little bit about students wanting some additional time for prep periods, so we're seeing provide undisturbed preparation periods to focus on their classroom prep. So that's what we have from the open response, and that really supports what we were seeing in the survey data. This is kind of a snapshot look at the district versus school focus. But really, where I want to jump into is, when we look at this, and this is in that original PowerPoint that you had received, when we look at this, this is looking at each of the specific schools, and you're seeing a distinction between the building focus versus the specific overall district focus here. And what you're seeing, and I just want to point out a couple of kind of examples. We asked some questions about, do you believe that your workplace is free of bullying and harassment? We talked about feeling safe in a classroom, which we've talked about quite a bit throughout the conversation tonight. And you're seeing with these, some of those schools that are rating this much higher than others, but you're also seeing that distinction between what is on the top is that school, and the grade area here is the district as a whole. Is there any questions on this slide or from what you had with looking at some of the All right. So again, the key items that we just talked about are really embedded here. One of the other things I want to point out on this slide is, there was two questions about retention within the district. And so the first was, I plan to be working at the district in one year, and I plan to be working at the district in five years. And one of the key things we're really looking for is, you know, what is, what are those key items that are driving that turnover and driving that retention? So with that, you know, we were looking at this to say, hey, so we know overall, hey, we're on an average of 4.1 on that Likert scale, looking at saying, hey, you know what, a lot of our staff plan on being here next year, yet, when we start to dig into the schools, there are some that dip down. Why is that? And that's a conversation, and as we get into some of that action planning conversation that we can look at and say, what's specifically going on in this school, and how can we support that from the administrative level? Kyle?
So in your experience, who do you think filled out the survey? So if I'm looking at this retention question, I'm wondering, so was it our really gung-ho on board population that filled out the survey, and then those who intend to leave didn't fill out the survey? Or do you think it's honestly like a good mix of both?
So what I will name is, I did not look at, I know one of the key concerns here was the anonymity of the data. Okay, so I did not look at email addresses other than to ensure we didn't have duplication. And if an individual chose, let's say, five schools, I just looked at the list to see what school were they really at. So to say that, I don't have that, but, you know, we had, you know, 58 in some percentage of individuals take the survey.
Okay, okay. So I don't think I said that the way I intended to. Who usually takes the climate survey? I mean, are they staff members who are really, like, upset and say, I'm going to let them know, I'm going to, you know, let them have, I'm going to nail them with this climate survey? Or is it the people who are saying, you know, well, we have the opportunity to give our feedback, to make things better? Or is it a mix of both? Because if I'm looking at retention, like, that number, to me, isn't quite as bad as I expected it to be. But then I, you know, waiting for the shoe to fall, though, is there that population out there that didn't take the climate survey that would cause that number to go up? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so these are the scenarios where you wish you had a crystal ball, right? And I don't have that, so, you know. But with that, you know, we know that we have more than half the population that took the survey. You know, the other side of that is going, okay, so when we dig into the data and look at the schools and look at, all right, what are the ones that are more below, you know, are more around a 3 versus the ones that are above that average? That gives us some really good insight into, what are the schools that are performing really well? Because those schools that are performing really well are ones that we can look at and say, what are you doing here to engage your staff? You know, and then they can be those mentors for those others that are not. So I think that that's something that's really key. And in a couple of slides, we're going to talk about, I feel respected, and I have some specific insight related to that that may be helpful here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on this? Yes, John?
When's the next climate survey?
So the next climate survey will be in the spring. We have not set that date yet, but it will definitely be before the end of the school year.
Thanks.
Yes. And again, we've now set kind of, you know, a base of looking at this. And the goal, then, is that we get a higher number of individuals taking it, because we've now started to build that trust. So going on to this next slide, which is the feeling respected. So I do want to name with this, we were very specific with how we asked this question. So we did not provide a Likert scale with this question, meaning a 1 through 5. So this was a forced response question of either a yes or a no. So with that forced response, you know, we were looking for a yes or a no, but we did allow for open comments with this question. So with that specifically, you know, I want to talk a little bit about the open comments first, okay? So one of the key comments that we received on this specific question is that 13, hold on, is when we looked at this question, 13% of respondents stated that a few parent students, administrators ruin it for all, essentially stating, hey, for the most part, it's good, yet there's one or two that are really bad, right? You know, or, hey, you know what, I'm answering no to this because there's the one or two, and when I request for assistance with this, I'm not getting what I need, and this is making it very difficult for me. So I do want to name that, but we only received that from 13% of the individuals that answered that open response, and 43% of survey takers did answer that open response question. So with that, what we're seeing here is, you know, the first question was, do you currently feel respected in your role by building administration? And overall, we're seeing close, 84.7% of individuals state that they do feel respected by their building administration. And with that, we definitely have some schools where we're seeing much more of that than others. So Brother Dutton and Hackett, we're at 100% of staff that responded to the survey said, you know what, our leader is great, right? At Aldridge, it was 97.8% positive. At Converse, it was 97.4% positive, and at Todd, it was 94% positive. So the next question was looking at, do you currently feel respected in your role by parents? And within this, we're seeing, you know, 83.2% of the staff stated that they did feel respected by parents. There were several, you know, individuals within those comments that said, and it would be nice if they were more involved, right? I feel respected, yet it would be nice if they were more involved. So that's almost, that's two different items there, but I do want to make that distinction, right? And so with that, there were, the top scores in that area were Brother Dutton at 100%, Hackett at 97.4%, Merrill at 95.5%. And I think that this is really interesting with Merrill, because with some of those other areas, you're seeing Merrill not necessarily in that higher ranking, but yet, we're seeing 95.5% of staff at Merrill feel respected by parents. And I just felt that that was a really interesting, you know, insight to kind of look at and say, okay, so we're looking at this in a different way. And then Converse at 92.3% and Todd at 89.7%. And then, do you feel respected in your role by students? And 75.5% of staff stated that they did feel respected by students. When we look at the schools here again, we're seeing Brother Dutton at 100%, Converse at 94.9%, Aldridge at 80.4%. So we're seeing that pretty high as well. And then when we go to community, and so I do want to name, we asked the different areas, because we're hearing some kind of feedback specifically, you know, stating, hey, we feel respected by these areas, but not these. So there are some perception items, but yet, perception becomes reality. And so when we look at that community, 71% felt that they were respected by community. The highest score here was Merrill, at 81.8%. Aldridge and McNeil were at 81.4, Colak, and then Brother Dutton. So feeling respected by the school board, overall, we're seeing that at 53%. And then feeling respected by district administration was at 47%, so less than 50%. And when we look at that, again, I just want to name, these are a snapshot in time, right? So we're setting a base of where we can go going forward. Okay, so the next, so that is really that summary of the feedback from staff in the climate survey. So when we look at, what are some of those action items that we can specifically take with these? There's a couple of key items here. And so with that, there's some leadership action of, what are those initiatives at the organization level that's the foundation for that successful change? You know, we saw within some of the areas that individuals were concerned about was that transparency and communication and feeling respected. So, you know, when we look at feeling respected, that was specifically looking at things such as the time that they have to do items within their classrooms, things like curriculum, things like being involved or knowing what was happening within the district with district initiatives. Manager action is really creating action paths for the team, those quick wins with individuals, to ensure that, hey, they do feel respected in their roles. And then, looking at people development, so what are those specific areas where individuals may not feel respected or may not... may not feel respected or may not feel valued in their specific roles? Any questions?
Thank you.
Jeff, I did want to ask one thing. I mean, I don't even know how to ask this, but the part about being respected by the school board. I mean, I feel like everything we do, every meeting, is supposed to be about, you know, the kids and the teachers. Do you have any suggestions on how we can realize what exactly brought it down to only 53%?
So, the insights that I have from the data all point to the superintendent and the transparency and communication. And so, that insight really looks at, how do we ensure that we have the transparent communication with staff and the buy-in, you know, from staff? Not meaning, hey, that you have to buy into every specific thing that's happening, but, you know, that you have the buy-in from staff for some of those key initiatives. You know, what we saw within that as well is, you know, we are the ones that are on the ground really, you know, implementing a number of these things, just to ask us, hey, what would, what would it look like? What are, you know, what are your thoughts on this? And again, that's more coming from an administrative level, but that would be really the insight that I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Tracy, we'll have probably a better idea when we do the next survey as well with the benchmark, because I think for the benefit of the community that, this is something the board started on last year to actually listen more. And what's interesting is, I'm very pleased with Bill Beckley and Sue Green. One of the things that they've done is they've gone out, they're visiting schools, they're talking to staff, they're talking to principals, they're getting feedback, and for the first time in a long time, I feel like we're actually listening to the teachers and the principals, which has been lacking here. And I think it shows up in the statistics. And, so I want to commend Bill and Sue, and as we move forward, I, I would think that the next survey will look a little bit differently. I hope we see more people participate. But again, I just want to, this was board-driven and really, this information is to help the administration more than anything to say, when you're, when you're talking to people, we kind of, we're hearing you. And so that's really where we're trying to go with this. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Your man, do you want to talk?
I, I would like to take just one moment to thank Tracy and the board for this process. I know we've kind of got off to a, a rough start and how it was gonna go. This information, as you said, is incredibly valuable. I appreciate the anonymity that we're able to provide our staff. I think that's critical at this point. But Jeff just beat me to that, that punch, is that I had the conversation. I am really looking forward to seeing what we come in the next survey, because I think that will be a telling change of where we are going forward. And so I want to make sure that we thank Tracy for her work and continuing to work with us. She actually came and met with our staff yesterday to kind of go over a little bit. I unfortunately wasn't available to make the meeting because I was looking for teachers at NIU, so go, we're trying to do that recruiting, but we really do appreciate everything you've done and the board, whether we want to say forceful or not, we appreciate, now, I appreciate you putting forward this effort so that we can move forward on this.
Can I add one more thing to this? And that is, you know, you're, you just spoke about recruiting and how we're bringing individuals in. In this transparent data, you know, the data is what the data is, and yet we have an ability to, to change that by implementing some of those key changes and knowing specifically what that is. And I think that that's a powerful recruitment tool as well.
I've gone through this myself with our company over the last several years, and I would, we highly encourage, and for all those that are listening or watching, to participate in this survey the next time around and not be part of that 42%, hopefully we can get that up well over 65%. And realize that your voice is heard and we are listening now, and hopefully that is resonating through, because, you know, we can't, if you don't say anything, we can't read your minds.
When will the next survey be?
We, we already asked that.
Spring?
In the spring, yep, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. And we are now at Mr. Beckley with School Visits, faces of the district.
Good evening to our board and good evening to everyone in this room. Thank you for coming. First, I'd like to say on behalf of Sue Green and myself, thank you to the board for giving us this opportunity. We really have been blessed. These first 20 days have been action-packed, filled with all kinds of things, but we're, we really are glad to be here. We think we've been given some tremendous support from the Colak staff, from the board, from the community. Sue and I have been overwhelmed by our reception. In the first 20 days, we have made 32 school visits and have personally met with over 200 employees. On February 7th, we were able to address the entire district staff at our district-wide meeting held at Beloit Memorial High School. We both said in our interviews with the board that our goal would be to establish trust. We would listen more than we speak and we would ask people the question, how can we help? We are finding that this district has so many dedicated employees who work hard at their jobs on behalf of our students. Each person we talk with believes in our district and is hopeful that we can work together to find a way to improve and to reach our full potential. From BLA to Todd, from Beloit Memorial High School to Robinson, from our food service to 4K, we have been amazed by example after example of how people are truly here because they care. I think Einstein said it best, not everything that counts can be counted. To us, the true story and the stories of this district are not always told. There is an underlying strength here that we, that we see has provided us with so much encouragement. There are faces we remember, not because they represent the exception, but because these stories are typical of wherever we go and found in building after building. Tonight, I know you can't go with me to visit the places that we have gone, but just briefly, I want to show you some examples of some of the people that we have met. I'd like to introduce you to Mary McNulty. She's a secretary. She's at Todd Elementary, and she has been there since 2003. She began working at Todd as a playground supervisor. From there, she was a health room assistant. Currently, she's the school secretary. Mary is dedicated to her job. She is very organized and meticulous about attendance. She is very knowledgeable about Skyward and even helps the principal with Skyward questions. The students love Mary because she is the tooth whisperer. She worked in dentistry when she was in the air force, and all the students come to Mary to get their loose teeth pulled. Parents even come back in the summer with their children when they need a, a tooth pulled. Mrs. McNulty has been a familiar face at Todd for many years. Her experience is an asset to all of us and especially to the students and staff at Todd. She embodies what it means to keep everything running smoothly. Staff, students, and families can always count on Mary. Next, I'd like you to meet Dave Gary. What, what a, what an example. But Dave is a hard-working and kindness, one of the most kindest men you'll ever meet. He puts forth 100% of effort. And Sue and I noticed this, we were walking through and Sue pointed out, did you notice that we saw a student pick up something from the hallway? We saw a parent pick up something that was down in the hallway, and we also saw a teacher. It's contagious in that building. Not only does he ensure our building is absolutely gleaming with cleanliness, he also generally cares about our staff and students, and they care about him. He is always there to lend a helping hand to everyone he sees. He followed me all over that building. He was so proud of it. You know, I thought, I thought eventually he'd give me some space, but he wanted to, he wanted to show me every nook and cranny in that building, and he was just, he was just, just so proud of what he was doing and where he was at and the people he worked with. Dave is a member of the Converse family. Next, probably one of the most bubbly, happy persons that you'd ever want to meet, and guess where she is? You, when, when you want, when you have to meet sick people, but when you are sick, don't you want to go to someone who's bubbly and cheery? Jenny is a tremendous asset to the Beloit Memorial Health Office. She always goes above and beyond to help her students and staff. Jenny has made a great connection with students over the years. Her caring nature is evident in her daily work, and we're grateful to have her as a part of the team. She positively elevates the staff and students at our high school. Next is Jennifer Pizzani, PE teacher at Gaston Elementary. I saw Jennifer pick up the 4K kids at the door so the teacher wouldn't have to walk them all the way down and then take them to the gym, and she described the first three days of 4K in the gym as herding cats, but you should have seen them the other day. Jennifer is a dedicated physical education teacher, consistently goes above and beyond for Gaston students. Students love physical education with Ms. Pizzani as her lessons are engaging, fun, and keep the kids moving. When you walk in the gym, you see the kids moving in multiple ways, hula hoops, basketballs, parachutes, music. Ms. Pizzani includes academic language and social emotional skills as a part of her instruction to meet all students and needs. Coincidentally, she went to Beloit Memorial High School. Coincidentally, she's in the Beloit Hall of Fame for athletics. Outstanding in high school as a softball and basketball player. I'm gonna say this right. Vida Bevenu, they do it?
Yep.
Wow. I walked in thinking I was gonna spend two minutes in the library, a half hour later I came out. Not only is she working in the library, her mother did, I believe, at Beloit Memorial High School. Vida has been a para educator at Merrill for 36 years. She's a pillar in the community in Merrill Elementary. She is part of a generation of role models and game changers in Beloit. She is so proud of her district. She holds that the true tiger pride and is loved and respected by all. I know a lot of students remember her and a lot of staff confide in her. Students who come back to Merrill seek her out and are willing to help her throughout the building. So we just thought we'd take a little walk through the buildings tonight, see what we see, and we're glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I know the people appreciate you visiting too. We are now at the report, Student Board Member Report. Cassandra?
Hello. So, just go through some. Okay. So just a quick announcement, next week, the juniors are taking the ACT all day Tuesday, so wish them lots of luck. Hopefully, we can reach those scores and get some higher numbers this year. Also, the BMHS Theater is putting on their annual spring musical, which this year happens to be The Addams Family, so go ahead and watch. March 13th, 14th, and 20th and the 21st at 7:30. $7 for students and seniors and $10 for adults, as well as Sunday, the 22nd at 2:00 PM. So go and support the theater, they're working really hard, so they deserve it. So, at the high school, we had an assembly and we talked about some things that we wanted to go over as like students and as staff. And one of the big things was the, like, tardies that we had, and we've seen like an increase in how students are being tardy to class. And so, in order to kind of encourage them to be on time to class and to follow the time period to the day, we have the night on time challenge. Here's an example. So at the high school, we have academies ranging from freshmen, hes, bach, and pacmes. And so the challenge is, is that whoever can have the best attendance throughout the month, at the end of the month, will be getting an award of ice cream during their academy lunch. And so just to encourage them to be on time, because in the real world, if you're tardy, it's not gonna cut it, so you might as well get used to it now in high school. So, also, last Friday, we had our annual Black History Month Assembly, which was led by Dr. Link and Ms. Hendricks, as well as MEO, and they planned and performed in their assembly. They had the staff team perform with a great performance as usual. And the students did a little skit where they talked about various black individuals who did impactful things in the country and in our society, and who just did great things that maybe aren't as well known, but still should be known because of the great things they've done, obviously. Wednesday, February 12th, the jazz band received very exciting news that they were chosen from 106 bands to compete at the National Essentially Ellington Jazz Band Competition in New York City. This will be their ninth year out of the 12 years they've auditioned, and they're really excited to go, and we're really happy for them because they work really hard. Finally, 11 art students were chosen from 900 submissions at the Rockford Art Museum to have their art both displayed and awarded for at the Rockford Art Museum. We had six seniors, four juniors, and a sophomore, and they're all being represented by Ms. Carpenter. And this is really like special. I've seen their artwork and their artwork is amazing. They work really, really hard, they spend hours in the art room, and their art pieces are just beautiful, and it's just really amazing that they're able to be presented an award and have their art displayed there. So yeah. So that's all the news for today. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Cassandra. And I do really want to thank you. You have to sit here for two hours to talk for like three minutes, so this is a bunch of old people talk about stuff, so thank you very much. Okay, we are at Planning and Budget Committee, Mr. Wong.
Planning and Budget, we met on Tuesday, February 4th at 5:15. Ms. Miller, Ms. Sanchez, and myself were present. One of the first agenda items was the approval of the committee purpose, which we came up with the following, to perform detailed exploration of and recommendations on future plans to optimize student achievement, supportive for teachers, responsiveness to the needs of the community, and stewardship of taxpayer dollars. Next item was the administrative salary range, which we, we did push on, and that is actually, I believe it's gonna be discussed in a future board meeting. And then we also discussed new course proposals. Mr. Briesmeister presented that for the CTE, which this is the second month, and we've had a number of new courses that have come in that I think are really gonna expand our, our offerings in the AP area. Athletic cooperatives, this is one whereby we, I believe it was approved that we were, we're gonna push it on to actually drop one of them, but the other ones will remain intact. And then with the renaming of the ad hoc committee for, is the ad hoc committee for language barriers. And the last item that we had in our meeting was the BMHS Academy, Academies Launch Update. So Mr. Briesmeister provided us with that and a lot of great information. It's really neat to see that come to fruition. I know it's been discussed for a number of years, or the last few years, but they've done a great job now at the high school putting that together. The next meeting will be Tuesday, March 3rd at 5:15 here at the Colak.
Thank you, John. Mr. Larson, Oversight and Finance.
All right, so we have had two exciting meetings since the last time we met here. Our first meeting was February 11th at 5:00 PM. I appointed Pam to be the vice chair of the committee. We also changed the, we modified the purpose of our committee, which, I don't have the minutes, I don't know what they are, what exactly we changed it to. The wordsmithing we did, so that will be coming to a policy committee to, because it's in the policy, so we have to change the policy. We approved, or we recommended approval for several things that are in on the consent agenda tonight. One of them is additional 2019, 2020 fund at 60 student activity groups. Another one is the bilingual homeschool liaison job description, and a third is the community outreach liaison job description. We also recommended approval of budget revisions and financial reports for December of 2019. Then we met again today because the board had asked the Oversight Committee to take another look at summer school. So at our meeting today at 4:15, we had a presentation update on summer school in which we recommended to the board that we go ahead and approve what they have for summer school so far, and that is also up for discussion. And then we also asked for an update on the Equality Committee. It is an administrative committee, and we wanted to see where our co-interm superintendents were in, in getting that committee back up and running, because it plays such an important role in our district. And so they will be reaching out to members of the committee who were on it previously, as well as reaching out to principals, looking for recommendations of people to serve on that committee. And so we will have an update on that at a later meeting. And our next meeting will actually be March 10th at 4:15. And our next meeting will actually be March 10th at 4:15.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, we're at Policy and Personnel, which, believe it or not, that's me. For the one and only time, January 28th, we had the, then called the Policy Committee, which was a full board. We did a clarification of what our standing board committees are. We changed the board overseeing the Policy Committee to a three-person committee, and we now will call it the Policy and Personnel. And the next time you hear this report, it will come from Pam Charles, as I appointed her later to be the Policy Chair. And I can tell you, I've worked with Pam for a long time. No one knows policy the way she does, so I'm looking forward to you doing the report next time, Pam. So, we did also the first reading then of the Policy and Personnel, which will come back to the board for a final reading, and that is my report. So, we are now at Governance Committee. There is no report for that. There was no meeting. We are now at Legislative Update with Megan Miller.
Thank you. So, in Board Docs, there's a document. I just summarized everything that had been passed through the Assembly this month and being considered in the Senate. So, I just wanted to highlight a couple, what I thought were high-interest items. Assembly Bill 816 unanimously passed the Assembly, which is to mandate Holocaust education being required in all of the districts in Wisconsin, and I just wanted to add some kudos to our district that's been doing that for at least 10 years, thanks to Chad Kwame and our history department. So, thank you to Beloit Memorial for putting us ahead of the curve there. It is a mandate from the legislature that does not come with any additional funding. Another legislative mandate that just passed the Assembly is, also with no funding attached to it, is the Cursive Writing Bill, which is Assembly Bill 459, which is a recommendation to incorporate cursive writing into the state model for English and language arts standards and requiring cursive writing in elementary grades. So, that is, I know people have been talking about that one. One that stood out to me was Assembly Bill 662, which is the Early Learning Online Program. So, if it passes through the Senate, it's been recommended to the Senate. There'll be limited access for three urban school districts and three rural school districts who are low-income will have access to a three-year online early learning program for low-income children. So, that's kind of something to watch. So, they're going to put an RFP, I guess, for that. Another Assembly Bill, AB 774, would allow virtual school students to participate in their home high school sports teams. Assembly Bill 8, let me read my own handwriting. I think it's 810. There'll be, there's been a recommendation for increased school funding transparency at the state level, so that would come along with a new website and give us all, as constituents, better access to see how schools are funded and, you know, we can compare then across the state. And then, the last one that has a potential professional development impact for our district would be Senate Bill 527, which are some additions to the seclusion and physical restraint restrictions. So, they're making them more rigorous. So, the Assembly, it says, concurred in this bill, which is already passed to the Senate and is going to the governor for signature prohibiting, there's additional prohibitions of what you can do in terms of secluding and restraining children. So, just wanted to make everybody aware of that. Does anybody have any questions on anything? Yeah.
Not really a question, but I wanted to mention one that you skipped over, I'm sure inadvertently, but AB 849, the open enrollment one.
Oh, yeah.
This came up in our workshop about charter schools, and if this bill passes, we will have to allow kids from the charter school to open enroll into our courses, up to two courses if they choose. But there will be a fee, and the DPI will set the fee for each course. So, we weren't sure at the workshop if charter schools would be able to do the open enrollment into our courses, and they indeed will be if this passes, up to two courses, and not just in high school, but grades 1 through 12. So, thanks, Megan.
No, thank you.
Megan, did you, you had said that there are going to be additional in regard to the restraints and seclusion. Can you speak to that just a little bit?
Yeah, I copy and pasted some of the text from the bill because I thought there'd be questions. So, if you go to the actual language of the bill, the first couple of lines, I'll just read them because I'm not trained in this and I don't have a full grasp on it. It just says, "This bill further prohibits such a," sorry, I don't know if this is like a typo, it's how I copy-paste it, but something about, oh, I see. So, it prohibits doors from having locks on them if there's a child in a situation who's being secluded, so you can't lock the door, even if the door is not capable of being locked. One of the conditions under current law for using physical restraint is that the individual restraining the pupil may not use certain maneuvers and techniques. So, this bill adds additional, I just want to clarify, additionally restricts. So, there are more maneuvers now that will be restricted.
Oh.
Okay, so adds maneuvers and techniques that place the pupil in a prone position to this list of prohibited maneuvers, so, and techniques. So, you're not additionally now not allowed to do these other things. Current law also prohibits the use of mechanical restraints on a pupil. This bill specifies that the use of vehicle safety restraints while transporting a pupil in a moving vehicle is not the use of a mechanical restraint. So, it looks like they're clarifying things, and I didn't know where we were at as a district with our professional development on that stuff, so I just thought I would highlight that.
Okay, thank you. I know that they stay abreast of it with the special ed restraints and they, yeah. But thank you, I was interested in that.
Yes, so more changes coming, most likely. So, there are other, there's other pieces of legislation in this document. If anybody has any questions, otherwise, it's available on Board Docs.
Thank you, Megan.
Yeah, thank you.
So, we are at Joint Education Convention Report. Back to Mr. Wong.
Okay. I had the privilege, and I would definitely say that, on the 22nd through the 24th to go to Milwaukee and spend some time in the, at the WASB convention. Well, the first thing I would recommend highly is that we definitely need greater representation from our district, and I know we were supposed to have one other person there. I would recommend probably between two to four. There was a wealth of information there, and after coming back, it's almost like, kind of like, okay, well, what do I do with this information now? It was all new to me. I knew nothing of what to expect when I went there. Fortunately, I ran into some people who knew a lot more than I did. One of the neatest things that I really encountered, and for those that have been there before, was the delegation portion. And as we go there, as a school member, I'm a delegate, so I get to sit in on the parliamentary procedure that goes on for several hours. I think it's about three hours. It's, I wasn't really looking forward to it when I first, when I was looking over the material before the convention, but when I sat in there, it was really cool how it's conducted. There was, we had, there was a number of things, and I'm going to point out some of the items that did pass. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Charles for proposing the quorum for the purpose of filling board vacancies. That passed very easily. One of the neat things about it when you're there, you have an electronic handheld device that you push your button if you vote yes or no. So, it's like instant real-time response as far as whether something passes or fails. There were several other items, and I think that in the health area that are going to be beneficial for our district. One was to increase funding for EL, English learner services. There was also, I think that Ms. Armstrong will appreciate this, Equalization Aid Payment Schedule is being stretched out over equally, 25%, four times a year versus the previous one, and that'll make it easier probably from a budget standpoint. There was also the bill that passed that was Transportation Aid for High Poverty Districts, and I think that will definitely impact us. School, let's see, let's see, Social Emotional Learning, there was additional funding for that, categorical aid, also mental health categorical aid that will be increasing, adopted and increased over the next three years. So, I was there for about half the time, and then I had to jump out because I had some other stuff going on. After that, we had State Superintendent Taylor spoke. She talked about her last year in the office. Her target is to increase aid for SEL, funding Social Emotional Learning to 60%, and then also a greater emphasis on early childhood literacy, which I think we've addressed with the Literacy for Life within our district. Several keynote speakers. I thought one was, that was very interesting to me, was a gentleman called Scott McLeod. He talked a lot about deeper learning, which engaged, talked a little bit about, and I think we've all heard this before, creative thinking, problem solving, and something I've heard from many speakers over the last six months to a year has been that the, it's kind of amazing that 70% of the jobs of the future haven't even been created yet. So, our kids have to be better thinkers, and I think we all have to, we have to think about that even as, through the educational process. Talked a lot about active versus passive instruction, and I know from speaking to my two boys that are at the high school and getting, and I always grill them on questions about, you know, what their classes are like and how are they learning? And it's always neat to hear what they have to say, because I feel like we're really doing it well within our district, at least the classes my kids are in. Several breakout sessions, and this is where definitely we could use help in having more bodies there, because I was only able to attend one at a time, so I attended three of them. One was on Elevating Achievement for All, a focus on equity, which was, I thought is very well done. The other one that I thought is interesting, because it'd be on the consent agenda, is onboarding new board members. I think that we definitely need to be looking at that. I know that we were going to be passing some role. I think that as well, there needs to be greater oversight as far as who's going to be responsible to make sure new board members are brought on in a proper manner. Third breakout session I attended was the Supporting Black Student Excellence. This involved a lot of information that we've heard in the past. One of the biggest areas, and I was very happy to see this, was involving discipline and how discipline is approached within the schools and the do's and the don'ts. Tucked about the idea of less equitable versus more equitable, and I can honestly tell you, being in the ad hoc meetings over the last month, that we are definitely heading the more equitable area, which involves a number of things, including restorative justice practices, behavior support, alternative learning environments. So, I think we're, I feel like, I feel confident in the direction we're going there. I also sent out to the other board members, and it's available, and maybe I can send that to you, Michelle, to send it out. I gave it to you before. There's a very good website from ProPublica, and I just sent it out to all the board members that in regards, it probably has more data than I've seen in the district, about our district, and you can also pull up any other district in the state. So, once again, it was three days of a lot of excitement, probably, well, definitely the highlight of the convention was the Beloit Memorial Jazz Band played before the largest crowd they've ever played in front of, and they were one of two bands that were recognized there for their performance, and they hit it out of the park. I had a lot of educators come up to me afterwards and saying, "Those guys, they sound like professionals." So, I had the honor to introduce them, and it was, they did it like they always do. Great. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, John. As a member that's actually attended that convention, and for other board members that have not, I think Pam, you've gone, I don't know, Kyle, if you've gone or not, but I would encourage you to go and actually stay overnight, because I think you missed something if you commute back and forth. There's a lot of stuff that goes on before and after, and you meet a lot of new people. So, thank you, John, for doing that. So, we are now at the Consent Agenda, keeping in mind, we have pulled 6H out, which we will discuss. I would welcome...
I would like to move approval of the Consent Agenda but omit Item O and H, as you said. Item O only because it was, there was a clerical error on the policy, and so we postponed it to the next policy meeting.
Okay.
I would...
You said Q, well, just O.
O, and then you said H, right?
In H, we pulled out first.
No, I would like to second the Consent Agenda, but I do want to caution, I know because of timing and kind of getting the committee structure kind of back in the groove of life again, I do want to caution the board against having things go through committee and then go to the full board for approval that same night, because it, I think, gives the optics that we're pushing things through, rushing, not thinking things through properly, even with policies. And we do have a 30-day waiting period for a second reading. Again, I just want to make sure everyone had, the community has enough time to review things and kind of let it all sink in, you know. So, I second with that caveat. Long-winded.
I appreciate that, Kyle, and I think normally what happens is when the committee makes that recommendation, we have a mid-month board meeting that gets approved at. This is a strange night where we, I don't think this is normal practice, but I appreciate the comment. So, do we have a second on that?
You just said ahead.
Okay. So, is there any other comment?
I have one more thing, Jeff.
Yes, go ahead.
In regards to the athletic co-ops that did come through our committee, and I do see a document for soccer, which is one of the ones that we were bringing forward as a motion not to continue, so...
Can we pull that one as well?
Since there seems to be confusion on it, I don't see any reason why we would move it forward at this time. I don't think it's a pressing issue that has to be passed tonight. So, if the board agrees, we... Joanne?
Can we revisit soccer, but go ahead and approve hockey, because hockey is a deadline that we have to do with WIAA.
So, just take it off the consent.
So, we'll take it off consent, we'll deal it separately at the end, and we'll do what you just suggested, because we do listen, you know, once in a while.
So, point of clarification.
Thank you for bringing it in.
We have summer school and co-ops taken off the consent but left on the agenda.
Right.
And we have the Policy 185 removed until it comes back from committee.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, we have a motion and a second, so on the Consent Agenda, so all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed, that passes. So, let's take the easy one, because it's first name in alphabetical order, Athletic Cooperative, so I would welcome a motion to do what Joanne said.
Approve the girls' and boys' hockey co-op with WIAA, and the soccer is not to be, we're not going to, we made no recommendation to move soccer. We had a conversation at committee, and the decision at committee was to not renew the soccer co-op with Beloit Turner, as our program is substandard by itself.
Okay, I'll move to approve the boys' and girls' hockey co-ops, and at this time, remove the girls' soccer co-op as needed for WIAA purposes.
Put your mic on.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Saying none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed, motion passes. We are now at summer school. I would welcome a motion.
I move approval of the summer school program. The Policy and Personnel, I mean, sorry, the Oversight Committee recommended approval of summer school program for 2020 with the understanding that we would get back data that shows progress of students on MAPS testing from spring of 2020 to fall of 2020, students that attended summer school, and also get back information on the cost to the district.
I'll second if somebody turns their mic off.
I'll second.
Oh, no, well, wait a minute. Well, you said, but she seconded, since you, she didn't turn her mic off, so...
No, mine was flashing green and then red.
I tried, it said no.
Michelle, I got to give a second to Wendy on that one, because he said if...
If.
See, Benji, we're very organized here. I'm glad you're learning this lesson on organization tonight. Why are you even here yet? What's the matter with you? Okay. Okay, we've got a motion, a second, is there discussion? Megan?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to thank, you know, our co-superintendents and Michelle Elliott for their work on this, and I understand the urgency of getting our summer school up and running. I want to, I want to approve this and move it forward, but I want to make the point to the board and perhaps bring it to a future agenda item later, that, you know, these are our kids 365 days a year, and while the entire world cannot rest on the shoulders of the district for all the excellent reasons that were presented in the presentation that we got, I would like us to move this forward with the understanding that the district is going to take a leadership role, reaching out to the municipality and community organizations to make sure that we're properly providing opportunities, not only for our kids to deal with, like, summer slump issues, which we know we all have, but also just to make sure that there are opportunities for our young people to be engaged in something over the summer. So, again, I have nothing but good things to say about the people who did this work for our district. I just, I didn't want to just push this forward on the Consent Agenda without, kind of like at our regular business meeting, making that comment, that I hope to see us take, maybe initiate some conversations, because this is a problem that we've had in Beloit for a long time, where there's just, like, not enough stuff for kids to do over the summer, and that's not even mentioning the enormous financial burden it puts on families who don't qualify for subsidy and maybe on paper can afford things, but we know can't truly afford things, and I worry about just the stress and the... And I worry about just the stress and the, just the burden that it puts on our families. And I'll make another comment about that on future agenda items, but I just, I had a great conversation with Bill last week, and I'm hopeful to see some, you know, whatever progress and leadership we can make on that. So, thanks.
And you have our pledge that we will follow through on that. Just because we're approving this tonight doesn't mean our work is done.
John?
Well, I can appreciate the need to have data and results when we get back. One thing that I would probably recommend with that as well is to make sure if you're going to do it for the kiddos that are in the classes, in order to have a sampling or a true sampling, I would think you maybe wanted to be comparing that to the kids that aren't going to summer school as well. So just a suggestion. Maybe you already thought about that, as you're nodding.
Anybody else? Kyle?
Yeah, and I wanted to add, in the presentation, there was a whole slide dedicated to community partnerships to help support that wraparound care for the other half of the day. And administration assured us that like those applications, that information would all go home in the summer school packet, so it wasn't as if here's your summer school thing, you have to go on your own, take further steps to search out that afternoon care, but all the information would be sent to families directly so they can make their plans accordingly. I almost said accordingly, but know what their options are and have the resources to execute those at once. I'm really, I'm off tonight, I don't know what it is.
No, it's not normal to me, you're always off. Ms. Charles?
I just wanted to also make a note that for those who are following the whole summer school thing on Board Docs, two weeks ago, we had summer school presented, and there was, there were courses listed, and those are all changing. Okay, that's important to know, that we were told today that they would be more focused on math and reading and perhaps in fun ways, hopefully in fun ways, engages students, but there will be a lot more of the core courses focused on in the summer school program. And the administration's going to bring that back, bring back their decisions on what courses to offer in, at our next meeting, at our next oversight meeting right now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, saying no other comments. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. We are now at future board meeting dates. I will remind the board on March 2nd, starting at 4:30, we have a superintendent search meeting with the entire board and with Bill, it'll be Sue's first day back. We have our regular scheduled meeting moved to March 17th from the 24th due to the annual chamber dinner. I don't have any other dates for committees, so those will come out, I'm assuming at a later date. Does anybody have future agenda items they want to bring up? Megan?
Hi, yeah, thanks, I have a couple. So we heard in public comment earlier, some comments on this. When I was at CISA II meeting last week, there was some discussion about something, it's training that CISA II is hosting called the National Equity Project, and they're looking, they're already through most of it now, but they're looking for additional funding to offer it to districts for next year. And along with that, they talked about like an equity scorecard, and I know I asked for an update at planning last time to get an update on, we were supposed to have had an equity, I can't think of the word now, audit. Thank you. So I'm just, I just wanted to put that out there as a future, I guess, just to reiterate a future agenda item for planning in response to what we heard this evening, and I'm just encouraged that CISA II is making this a priority. Another future agenda item I want to bring up is Sunday at BIF, I attended the No Small Matter viewing. It dealt a lot with the importance of early childhood education, and it was brought up in the discussion after the film, that it would be great if the school board members and possibly our administration would have a screening of that. So I don't know if that needs to be like discussed. Go ahead, Bill.
I saw it. Saturday.
Oh, you saw it, I missed you.
It was great.
Yes, I saw it Sunday. No, it is phenomenal. So I just, I wanted to make everybody aware of that. I don't know if that would need to be like a workshop or something, but I just wanted to put that out there as a potential workshop, just to kind of continue the momentum. It's absolutely powerful, phenomenal, good stuff. That's my second point. My third one, I'd like on a future agenda item to hear fiscally what we're able to do in terms of, if we are able to do anything about wraparound care funding for this summer, just to see if that's a possibility just for the summer, since we're changing summer school significantly for the schedule. And then the fourth thing, I was wondering if we could get an update on behavior interventions because I know discipline is a big focus point in our staff climate survey, and I'm just wondering if we can have an update on, I know Peggy and Emily gave a really fantastic presentation about like SIT and everything, they talked about we're looking for other supports, and I was just kind of curious to see where that's at right now.
John, you?
I have one agenda item. I would like to have a board discussion about what we're going to do as far as our strategic planning process, are we going to put it off? What are we doing? Because I think there are a lot of things going on in the community that they're kind of looking for us to be a part of, and this, with the creation of new strategic plan, it's important, and I think we just need to decide what we're going to do.
John, you want something?
Actually, it's probably more of an announcement. I made this announcement at our last committee meeting, but kind of a plug for BIF, and I might be out of line a little bit, but there's a movie on the 28th and this coming weekend, on Saturday and on Sunday, at 2:30. It's called Love Them First. It's a lesson from Laney Elementary up in the Twin Cities, and it's about a district that really went through a lot of struggles, and they rebounded back out of it. So I think that if you had a chance, I'm going to go see it. And I know Ms. Beaver says that it's actually free online, and we might be doing a viewing, or maybe we can arrange for that.
We should show it to school services, special ed care.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I have two things. One of the things that I want to make sure we, we start on the path, but I want to continue it and reinforce it, that as board members, you all serve on committees and feel free to work with the committee chair, to work with the administration team, and most of them are sitting right in front of us. We need to do a better job of communication, and I think the barriers are lifted, I say it nicely, because we have quality people to work with, and we have ideas here, and most stuff should really start at the committee level and should be, the administration should be part of it. I have asked Joanne to bring forward the salary ranges. Again, we've talked about it, and I think that's the right way to go. We have to hire people and advertise, and I think it's appropriate that that does come forward, the ranges. So I'm not sure if that would go to Kyle's committee, because it's current, or are we looking for?
We had discussed whether it's current because that's what we were hiring on, and those will be enforced this year, but it's just range.
Just ranges, we're not talking about pay raises, just the ranges, which is, so I would, I would suggest, Kyle, you and Joanne, work on that as a committee item, please. And having said that, I did beat the nine o'clock deadline, so this, well, I guess you guys want to give me a motion to adjourn? Or you want to stay?
No.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? Okay.
Good job.